Cody, thank you so much for joining me today.
Thanks for having me.
So you're running for county commissioner?
I am.
Fantastic. Well, I'd love to get to know you a little bit better and talk a little bit about what motivated you to run for this position. But first, something I love about our community is that everybody has a story of how they got here. Nobody is in Pullman or the Pullman area by accident. Everyone came here either to start a job or to build a business, or maybe they grew up here, but they're part of an operation that is about making things better. So what's your road to Pullman? What brought you to this area?
My great grand, great, great grandmother homesteaded here in 1900 without a husband with nine, eight kids.
No way.
Yeah.
Nineteen hundred?
Yep. That's our family homestead.
Wow.
So just out above the Snake River.
And where did she come from before then?
The came from, I think, the Iowa area.
Wow. Why, why Whitman County?
I have no idea.
She's not around to ask, obviously.
Yeah, I have, I have no idea. But so she made it work with a bunch of kids churned, churned and sold butter.
And is that the, the origin story of the Finch's?
That's the origin story of the stories. So my grandma's side, and then the Finch's came here out of Ione, North, North Washington, previously South Dakota, and they were grocers. So then they opened the grocery store downtown Finch's, which is, was where the batting cage and Dickinson's was.
Yeah. Wow. So your family's been here for several generations.
We've been here a while. So I didn't, I didn't have much of a choice.
Yeah. But so then, but then the next question is, why did you stay? Because as part of a big family, you know, a lot of people leave. You could have gone anywhere. Why'd you cho, why did you choose to stay here?
You know, I, I think it was really the, the, it was the farm and the ranch that held me here. I could have, I could have gone somewhere else and, you know, you'd probably find me in Montana or, or somewhere with bigger open spaces. But, but you know, if the, the dream is to build something and own something, like we already have that going here. So.
That's awesome. So what kind of operation you guys run right now? You said, you said ranch?
Yeah, we run, we run cattle. So that's my, that's my full-time day job.
Where at?
So if you were down at Boyer Park or Lower Granite Dam, which you know well, and staring up the hill, you're staring at our cows. So.
Fantastic. Yeah. Very cool. All right. I gotta come out sometime. Take some pictures.
For sure.
Is it just you and the family? Do you have, do you have a big operation?
It's, uh, my dad and I are partners on that. And, uh, we, yeah, we run almost 80 pairs out there. And which is not a big operation, but it's, it keeps us busy and the way the market's going, it's, it could almost be a full-time job at this point. So.
Yeah. Usually when I'm talking to people in rural Whitman County, we're talking about grain.
Yeah.
We're talking about wheat, but you guys, you guys went the beef route.
Well, our farmland, you know, we have 500 acres of farmland, which is not enough to run a.
It's not huge.
It's not, it's not, it's not a good justification to have a $2 million combine and a million dollar tractor.
Yeah. The, the economics have changed over the last 50 years.
Yep. So, and we got out of farming when I was knee-high. So, so I, I remember it vaguely, but and I've, and I worked harvests over the years for people, but yeah, yeah. Never farmed myself other than that. So.
Nice. Nice. So, uh, is it, are things going well? Like beef prices?
Beef prices are fantastic. So yeah, it's a, it's a great time to have cattle. We just.
Do you guys sell locally or are you mostly exporting out?
No, the, the, I could go, I could do a whole video on the economics of beef right now. But, uh, the, the prices being what they are, really the only efficient way, butchering so expensive that if it's not done in a, in a big plant somewhere, you're paying a lot of money. So we can actually sell our cattle more than I could sell you beef.
Local beef.
Wow. So very cool.
Yeah.
Very cool. So you've been involved in this region for a while, generationally speaking.
Yep.
What made you want to go county commissioner?
That's, that's what, that's the role I would like to put myself out there for.
So my, my family's always been very active in the community. My, you know, my grandpa and great uncle started the Pullman fireworks.
No way. How, how long ago?
Oh, the seven, early seventies.
Okay.
Somewhere there.
Love the 4th of July.
Yeah. Yeah. They, they started that. My great uncle was the county commissioner.
Okay. So you got some family history in this.
Yeah. And then I've always had an interest in politics. I've always come up around the dinner table. My wife was the chief of staff for two mayors in Spokane. So.
All right.
I just can't get away from politics. It seems like.
Do you have any previous elected experience?
Nope. No other, and then, you know, we deal with so much of the county being property owners and, and just living here all the time that I thought, I thought the job would be something maybe a little different than what it's looking like it is. But through the appointment process, there's definitely some issues that need to be fixed at the county.
Okay.
And I think there, I think, I think it's the time for someone to step up, maybe a different, a different viewpoint. Let's not do things the way they always were done. Let's do some easy things to fix the county.
Awesome. Well, let's dive into that a little bit. Um, you know, it's, everyone has to start somewhere, right? I don't know what, what, what the path to, the ideal path to county commissioner actually is, but I'm guessing there's some sort of inciting incident for you. Like what, what's your origin story that made you go, that's it. I gotta throw my hat in the ring?
Oh. I don't know. Every time you get a tax statement from the county and it doesn't make any sense or, or, uh, you know, through divvying out my grandma's estate, just, uh, trying to get the right parcel in the right name. We were the last, we were the second to the last county in the nation to go to G I S.
Second to last county in the nation?
In the nation.
Not the state?
Not the na, not the state.
If you told me the second to last of the 33 counties of Washington, I believe you. But you're saying the second to last in the nation?
In the nation.
That can't be right.
That's what I got from Onyx.
Oh, my goodness.
I don't know if you've ever used that app, but it lists property owners. Yeah. We were, we were one of two. They posted something at one.
So if you're doing any kind of property transfer, if you're, if you're selling a parcel or if you need to replat something, that greatly complicates the admin load required.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure. And, and when, when you're looking at, oh, well, we got this back 40 or whatever, and you're looking at a 16-digit number code, it, it's really hard to make it make sense. G I S is very helpful for.
Oh, for sure. For sure. Now fortunately, that's happened though, right?
We're, we're there.
Okay, good.
They don't get updated very often, but, but, um, you know, it's just some frustrating things like that, that, uh, you know, we could just be doing this so much more efficiently.
Yeah.
And we're not.
Well, I, I want to dive into the issues that you brought up. We're going to talk about all that, but first let's, let's zoom way out and talk very big picture.
Okay.
To your understanding, what is it that county commissioners do? What, what is the job of that three-person commission board?
Yeah. They're the, so they're the chief executives of the county.
Executives, plural. So instead of having like a mayor or a governor, a county has these three people.
Yep.
Who get to decide.
Yep. Okay. By voting, you know, so you need the majority. So in general, most of them, most of the times everyone agrees, but two, two beats one. So.
All right.
So the main thing's budget and not just the county, not just for their offices, but for the other independently elected. So the sheriff will ask the county commissioner.
Yeah.
I need this much in my budget this year. And, and then there's, you know, then there's some talks and dialogue. And, and the county commissioners could, you know, kneecap that or they could support that. And, uh.
So what's the relationship between the commissioners and those elected? Like does, do the commissioners get to tell the sheriff what to do?
Nope.
Or the auditor?
No, they can't tell them what to do other than with their budget. So.
Oh, interesting. And they, can you earmark stuff? Can you say this money is for blank? You can only spend it on blank?
I think so.
Okay.
You know, to a, to a degree. And then, and then when you have the, all these, you know, cause then you're under state law. And there's so many different, different pools of money that get automatically collected from licenses or, you know, boat registration. We've got this pile of boating safety money that just comes out regardless, you know? And that has to be used on those specific things that it's earmarked for. But, um, yeah, there, there's a lot in just budget, but then there's also the ordinance part of it. And we're going through a lot of that with this wind farm zoning.
Oh, yes, we are.
And, uh, you know, and then there was a potential, uh, noise ordinance in the county that came up that got some people riled up a year and a half ago.
Yeah. Um, what do you feel is the, the correct place of a county government? Cause some people are under the impression that all of this is hierarchical, like, you know, the city answers the county and the county answers the state and all that. But that's, that's really not the case. There's a lot more wiggle room than that. What, what do you feel the proper role of county government is?
Well, so I mean, where it sits, I would say it'd be, you know, right there with the city, you know, they're, and really the city of Pullman and county run about on the same budget.
So they're almost peer entities.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And then they run under state law, both of them, and then that under federal law. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of different rules to follow.
For sure. Do you, do you want, do you feel like our county, Whitman County needs to take a more active role or do you feel like we need to roll some things back?
A more active role in what, for instance?
I'm speaking very generally, you know, like most of the people watching this are in the city of Pullman and we're a little bit lopsided here in that a huge percentage of voters in Whitman County live in Pullman.
Yeah.
Right? But ultimately Whitman County government is responsible for everything but Pullman, right? Like where the city, where the city ends, the county begins. If you're talking about land use.
And then so, and then, but then there's a lot of those Whitman County services that, I mean, the, the sheriff, they.
That's true.
They still have jurisdiction in Pullman.
That's true.
To some extent.
And we need not just jurisdiction, but cooperation.
Yeah.
You know, we had that horrible car accident on the Moscow-Pullman highway just a, a short time ago.
Right.
And every agency got involved in that. And I actually heard there was really great cooperation between city of Pullman, county, state patrol.
Yeah. I think, I think it's more like we think of, we think of the Pullman as being here, the county's here. That, you know, really other than the, uh, public works part of the county, the roads, you know, the, the treasurer, the, that, you know, the treasurer, the auditor, the assessor, they have everything to do with the Pullman residents and their property.
So like when you pay your property taxes in Pullman, that doesn't go to Mayor Benjamin and Pullman City Council. That goes to Colfax.
And that goes to Colfax where it's divvied up for the different bonds and in taxing districts. So, yeah.
Yeah. Awesome. Okay. So circling back, what do you feel like the, the sweet spot is? What's the, what's the proper role of Whitman County government?
I think, I think, well, my personal stance is that government at any level should be, you know, restricted, minimal as, as can be with offering the necessary services. I think the way Whitman County has been run has, I think the way it's run has worked for a while.
Okay.
You know, with the growing, we've sensed our creation, we've had WSU right there alongside of us growing. And SEL came later.
And SEL leases Whitman land, Whitman County land, right?
Through the. Yeah. I mean, technically, technically that's through the port, which is the economic development.
Oh, good point. You're right. That is different.
But, you know, the port was created by the county commissioners. Now the county commissioners don't have control over the port. They have their own commissioning board. But, you know, they meet at least biannually. And I think they could have a little more of a thumb on the scale and.
There you go. So you say that, that things have worked for a while, but we've kind of outgrown that. What do you mean by that?
I, I think we can't just sit back and assume that the county is just going to grow through WSU and SEL. I think, I think we need to, especially the way our businesses are closing, not, you know, we're, we're giving, we're having less and less businesses, not more and more. That we need to take a different approach and say, okay, this worked for a long time, but it's not working anymore. And we really need to push, you know, new industries, economic development. And that doesn't mean to say we're going to put a biodiesel plant in Pullman.
I don't remember that. That was a fun argument.
Yeah. Yeah. It, it, I think we just need to create the best environment possible for businesses, for residents. I think we need to take a real look at our budget. I know everyone's budget is a little tight, you know, in this era of inflation, roads cost more, everything costs more, salaries cost more. If you want to retain anybody, but I think we need to really look at the budget. Maybe set some new goals as to what we want to accomplish as a county.
Okay.
And let's, let's, let's not take it as, oh, we're dying or.
Yeah.
Everything's Idaho's so much cheaper. Everything's moving there. Let's, let's kind of carve our own path.
Yeah. A fatalistic view never inspires change.
No.
So, okay. For instance, what, what change would you like to see?
Immediately?
So now you, you get elected, you, you replace the incumbent who was appointed earlier, you become one of those three commissioners. What do you want to see happen in your term?
The, this is now, we have to remember that this is a special election to fill the last year of the term that Michael Largent stepped down from.
Right. So Largent resigned. He, is it, was Chad was.
Yep. Appointed.
Appointed, yeah.
So, cause you can't be appointed for more than, more than a year or something like that. So, so Chad wasn't able to have the appointment for the whole thing. So now we're having a one-year special election. So whoever gets elected now, and you very well might see Chad and I running again in March. So we're not going to get much rest from, uh, putting up signs.
So the term only goes for?
One year, January 1st to January 1st. Yeah.
Okay.
December 31st. But yeah.
Huh.
So this is a special election. So what can you do in a year? And, and.
Well, and, and.
And I want to get to the big picture too, but.
But you're, you're campaigning not just for one year. You want to be in this position for a while. So it's okay to talk about more than just one year. What do you want to accomplish at the county?
Well, I, I say it that way because I think immediately transparency and accountability could come at the county level. We, we, uh, you know, we got on Zoom for the county meetings because of COVID. And no one has ever pushed the record button on it. And.
Seriously?
Yep.
There's no recordings of the commissioner meetings?
Nope.
What about when they were in person? Were those being recorded?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Oh, come on.
Right. And so like.
Cell phones exist.
And so have, and have you been out to the commissioners chambers?
I have, I have not. This is my, this is my first time dipping my toe into county politics.
The room is set up with cameras and, you know, it's, it's all ready to go. And all we have to do is push the record button on it.
And, okay. I'm a media guy. That, that, that frustrates me. Okay.
Well, maybe, maybe a letter from you could help things out. So.
I don't know. People don't tend to listen to me when I complain about stuff.
Yeah. Well, me neither. That's why I'm running.
There we go. Okay. So transparency. So like, yeah, we can make the memes more public, but is there something that you want to see exposed to more daylight?
I, I just think, I think the way the county has run has kind of been just not behind closed doors necess, necessarily, but, you know, the commissioners meet 9:00 AM Monday morning. If you're not in person or watching live on Zoom, or if one of our very few local reporters cover anything, you would never know what happened in that room.
That's.
So most times unless there's a big issue like a wind farm or, or, you know, maybe people's property taxes doubling, that nobody would ever watch.
Yeah.
Or care. And, and for some people, that's okay, you know, to just know.
Should people care?
Yeah, for sure.
Like what kind of things are getting decided that people should care about?
Oh, I mean.
Besides wind farms, besides property taxes?
Yeah. I mean, those are the big issues. And I, and I don't think, I don't think people should care that they decide that they're going to repave a bridge on, on, uh, a certain road, you know, that's not for the whole county to care about. That's for the people on that road to care about, to voice their concerns when it's, but we need to know what's going on. And, and with this, this, just the simple thing is if you put it online, it just takes one person saying, hey, I heard this at the meeting. I saw, I watched this. Check out this clip right here.
Yeah.
And then, and then we can start some dialogue about it.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not, you know, it's still representative government. And those three people should be accountable for the whole county. And so by getting the information out there, I think we'd get better feedback back. And I think we'd make, be making better decisions in the interest of the county. So.
Well, I think that more transparency is always better than less transparency.
Right.
And if we can produce more content, even better, even better still. But let's talk about some of those hot button topics here. What's going on with wind farms?
Well, we finished the project on the highway up by the rest stop, 95 and I think 2011, 2012.
The project?
What? Oh, the wind project as you're going north to Spokane, you know, you got the wind farm up there.
Talk about it by Rosalia.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
You say we finished that. Was that?
I'm sorry. I'm speaking as a county. I'm not there yet.
That was a private development, right?
Yeah, but it, it took, it took our zoning ordinance.
For sure.
And so at that point, I think the county was looking around and saying that these potentially would offer the county a lot of money that go to our schools and just, you know, basic tax revenue. And I think in hindsight, I mean, it's paid money, but those, those companies are very good at depreciating their assets. That money doesn't last forever.
What, what kind of revenue does Whitman County receive from the Rosalia wind farm on annual basis?
I want to say it's in the low $200,000 range.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Oh, I, so it's not a game-changing amount of money?
No, no.
Like enough to hire one and a half people?
Yeah. And I, and if you've talked to people around those projects, you know, I think, uh, you hear, well, you know, those, that's not even a one and a half local jobs. That's somebody coming in out of somewhere else.
Sure.
You know, doing work on a tower. So, and.
But as far as like money going into tax coffers, you're saying it's around a quarter million dollars a year?
I, I believe so. I think that's what Michael Largent was telling me.
Interesting.
That, you know, that what was, what was thought was not what was delivered. So.
Were the promises a lot more than that?
I don't know if it's promises. Um, and you know, we're in a state that, uh, keeps giving breaks to energy companies like that.
Climate Commitment Act really pushes some high goals for our new generation to be instructed.
So, you know, maybe when it was, when, when that, uh, when that project went in, we were set up to get more money. But I, I do know, and as any company should within the tax code, depreciate your assets.
Yeah, of course, of course. Yeah. But that, that installation's been there for a while. Now we're looking at Harvest Hills wanting to do something much closer to Pullman. And I don't remember there being much uproar at all about the Rosalia project.
No, but that it's, there's very few people out there.
Yeah. And those Harvest Hills one has dominated the headlines.
There it is. But, but the issue with that existing wind project is that we never changed our, our zoning. So we are still in a wind or any energy company's eyes, we are a county open for business. Cause that was created because we wanted the.
So there's no incentives, there's no restrictions. It's just.
Yeah. We're, we are, you know, cause some counties have taken a stand and said, we don't want this. And we're, we still have old ordinance on our books that says, we do want this. So you, you know, we don't have big setbacks. We.
Yeah.
You know, we, we are ready for it. Now with Camiac Butte, totally different. There's a lot of small acreage properties out there.
Ton.
And it is one of the scenic viewpoints for the entire county.
Oh, for sure. Yeah. No, it's, it's, it's a gem of our region. Um, was there any, was there enough public outcry after the Rosalia project to warrant changing the codes?
No.
Is there a reason why this was left the way, way it is?
No. And, and that's kind of one of the things I'm running on is that we for so long, we're reactive. We're not, we're not proactive about anything. But after that first project and then seeing what it is and, you know, maybe we should have said, you know, that's really not the type of project we want in Whitman County. We've got these beautiful vistas, scenic landscape, agriculture is a big priority for us. And not that you can't have that around those towers, but you know, photography and, and the things we care about. Do those projects align with that? And I think what we're hearing now is that maybe they don't. So. And we just got, well, I guess almost a month ago now, we were at the fair and the people out in Hooper and down in Central Ferry, the first things they said to me were, we don't want those in our neighborhood either. So.
Oh, man.
So.
Even further out.
Yeah. So maybe we need to really take a look at what we want as a county. And let's just, let's just put good zoning on the books. And if a company, and if we come up with a good plan and a company can still come in and pull off a project within those regulations, then so be it. But let's, let's get our priorities, you know, let's, let's support the constituents of the county, set our priorities on what we value. So.
Well, let's unpack this a little bit more because the, the community has made their voices heard on this.
Yeah.
The, the anti-wind farm side has been much more vocal than the pro-wind farm side. Funny detail I noticed when the Save Our, Save the Palouse crowd did their first big public event at SEL to talk about pushing back against the wind farms. That same night, the, the local, uh, climate group, they didn't attend in support of the wind farms. Instead, they did a webinar where they talked about breaching the lower Snake River dams.
Which divert, divert the attention.
Well, not just that, a very not pro-climate thing to breach the dams, obviously. So I just, I found that interesting. There, there hasn't been, even the people who are very much vested in the climate conversation have not stepped up to support this wind farm project. So why hasn't the county taken action on this? This has been in the conversation for months, if not years. I understand that it's kind of bubbled to the surface a couple of times at some meetings, but like, why hasn't there been action taken?
You know, the, you can't, we can't totally say that they haven't taken any action. They, they did the moratorium.
They basically put a pause on things.
They put a pause on things and they've directed the planning commission to come up with new zoning. But the planning commission is just advisory. So ultimately they could, whatever they come up with, county commissioners could strike down and say, no, we don't want that.
Sure.
And I think the better.
Which is normal. That's how, that's how this process works.
But I think the better thing to do would probably be for the county commissioners to give a directive to that board and say, this is where we, this is where we stand as a county on wind. And let's craft a code towards that goal or, or take a stand and say, we want them. So let's, let's craft our code to say we want them.
Yeah.
I don't think it's really fair to put that on a committee of people and, and march, you know, march both sides in front of them and.
Yeah. It's, it's just been interesting though, because I have, I've been wondered why the county commissioners haven't taken more firm stand on it. And to my understanding, there's concerns about the process of this getting diverted to a decision made in Olympia. Cause there's an appeals process where essentially Olympia can override local zoning on energy issues and basically take it out of our hands.
Right.
So, so really cracking down on wind and banning the Harvest Hills project, it could absolutely backfire.
It could, but we, you know, the energy site, that committee you're talking about, that the, uh, they take into consideration local code.
Okay.
They taking to consideration, um, you know, landmarks. And so I think if as a county, we were to say, you know what, we value our scenic, our scenery. Let's, let's make Camiac Butte, Steptoe Butte, you know, we have the eastern half of Palouse Falls. Let's make those scenic natural landmarks.
Well, county landmarks. We can't, we can't declare it nationally.
No, natural.
Natural.
Got it. Sorry. I misheard you. Yeah. Um, so let's, uh, let's protect those areas and let's set up a code that doesn't have anything to do with specifically wind. Let's tie it to, you know, cause we're also the, the county that doesn't let people build on hilltops. Which, you know, in some ways is great. In some ways it's limiting what people can do on their own property. But what if we.
It's majorly limiting.
Look, people, yeah.
Yeah.
But what if we, what if we tie that to, to anything you build on your property, you just have to maintain a setback related to height.
Yeah.
By some multiple. And let's make, we could, I think we could make a one-page setback and zoning code that could encompass everything.
Okay.
It'd be easy to understand. And then the great part about all of this is that there's always the chance to appeal or to seek a variance. Cause county, we didn't talk about that. County commissioners are also quasi-judicial.
That's true. So, that's true. This whole wind farm conversation has been intensely frustrating to me. I've had a lot of people on both sides try to ask me to get involved and I'm just like, oh, I can't touch that. I can't touch that. But I've also seen a, a lot of my, my friends on the left who are very in favor of climate initiatives just go totally silent on this. And then I've seen a lot of my friends on the right suddenly get very interested in the government being more involved in telling private property owners what they can do.
Yeah.
And I'm just like, we're living in crazy town now. No one is living their values.
It's been, it's been really interesting to have people come up to me and tell me their thoughts on this. And it's, and for you, it might be, well, I love hiking Camiac Butte. You know, I don't like the visual aspect of it, you know, I don't.
I don't want to look at that. Not in my backyard.
Right. Or I'm a photographer or I'm worried about, you know, birds dying.
Sure.
Or I'm worried about, uh, you know, the, the true carbon footprint of them with that much concrete and steel and fiberglass and carbon fiber. You know, that, you know, they're really not this big green machine that we all are led to believe necessarily. You know, that, you know, they're really not this big green machine that we all are led to believe necessarily. You know, it doesn't matter where that's coming from. The result is that most of the county, I'd say at least 90% are against them in some way. And, and then the pushback I've got on the other side is like, well, it's private property rights. What it, you know, you should be allowed to do what you want on your own property. And, you know, that's just not the world we live in. You can't just, you know, you can't put up whatever you want just anywhere. So, um.
So I should probably not build my nuclear reactor out in my front yard?
As long, as long as it's a micro reactor, I think that's okay, so.
You know, we are like less than a mile away from a working nuclear reactor.
I know.
We have one here. It's awesome. One of only 50 research reactors at a university in the country.
Yeah.
Yeah, very cool. Well, the, the wind farm thing, I don't expect it to go away anytime soon. You know, I think there's probably a lot of voters out there who are wondering, okay, as a candidate, are you pro or like, are you gonna take a firm stand?
I'm gonna take a firm stand against it.
Okay.
I have taken a firm stand against it. I would in a commissioner meeting.
Yeah.
I'd probably, uh, you know, day one, make sure to make some public comment about that.
There you go. Well, like I said, I, I'm not getting involved in this one for a variety of reasons, although I am going to give a, a tip for people. And I know a lot of people are watching, I'm just gonna put this little breadcrumb out there. Go online and Google FERC, the Federal Energy Commission, whatever. They have a map that shows every wind installation in America, and you can zoom into Washington. There are no wind farms west of the Cascades.
Wonder why that is.
And to me, that says everything. That says everything about Olympia's attitude towards the eastern half of the state.
Yeah, and energy projects are always not in my backyard.
And the wind does blow in western Washington. We have data on that. So anyway, all right, moving on. Uh, another hot button issue, uh, southern truck route. Um, this actually came in front of the Board of Commissioners recently, and it passed two to one, which is actually a fairly lopsided vote. Like you said, a lot of things are unanimous. Um, what's going on there and what is, what's the county's role in deciding how to approach getting truck traffic out of downtown Pullman?
Yeah, I don't know if they were necessarily looking at that. I can't, I can't really speak for them, but for me, if, if paying the co, if paying Welch Comer to um, apply for grant money and in that, I think they paid 32,000, they off, said they'll commit $32,000 to that Moscow.
Which is, that's chump change.
It is, it is. If that ends up bringing in the proposed $20 million or whatever they're seeking and we get some updated roads out of it, I think that's great.
Okay.
I don't think, I think when you look at where the truck, truck traffic originates from, where it's going to, I think by now we all know that most of the, the truck traffic in downtown Pullman is because they have business in downtown Pullman.
It's, it's almost exactly 50/50.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and by, and by doing a route there, well, yeah, that'll probably, that might take a couple of the uh, hay trucks that we see moving hay in the summer out of downtown. But it, I don't think it'd be the significant.
We, we think it averages out to about 250 trucks per day.
Per day?
Per day. Now, that's average over a year.
Alright.
You know, so sometimes you have more, sometimes you have less. Well, a lot of people don't realize is that, um, based on the traffic studies, most through town truck traffic is already avoiding rush hour. So your average Pullman resident actually isn't seeing the traffic that's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're already choosing to go through town during less congested times.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting that if, if that is the option, why Pullman wasn't even part of the seeking any, any grant money, but I guess, well, I guess, I guess it wouldn't affect them.
It's out of the city, yes, there's no jurisdiction there. Yeah.
You, well, you'd think they'd be there cheering or something at least.
Well, uh, did you have a chance to read the RTPO report?
I did.
Awesome. Any, any feedback on that?
You know, I, I just think that we need to, we need to be careful on what our goals are. We don't want everybody avoiding downtown. We don't want to make it too, we don't want to make it too easy to, we don't want to have a southern route to get around, a northern route to get around.
That's what a true bypass would actually do.
Exactly.
When people are, when people say we need a bypass, I go, are you sure you want that? That's literally the plot from the movie Cars.
Right.
Like, I, I'm not sure you want that.
Yeah, Radiator Springs there.
Yep, exactly. Um, and this isn't a bypass, this is a truck route. This is to divert a subset of large vehicles out of the, the business core.
And, you know, so again, if, if it's $30,000 to, to get $20 million, that's obviously money well spent.
Yeah.
You know, it's, $20 million is not a project that the county can just take on with our, with our annual.
Oh, definitely not, yeah.
So, and, and I think just in general, we, we are in a state that has a lot of regulation. You know, we are in, we have a lot of regulation just through and through around here. So if we, we need to do a better job, if we're gonna be sending money away, that we need to be a better job, do a better job about asking for some of that back. So my, my questions that would go along with that is, do we not have somebody who can write a grant at the county? Why, you know.
Write a grant application?
Yeah, you would think that being uh, where we function so much on, on uh, intergovernmental money, that we probably should be able to write some grants ourselves now.
Yeah, I mean, easier said than done with the way staffing works at the county.
That's true.
Yeah.
That's true, but I would be curious how we are dueling compared to other counties, you know.
Well, I think that's part of why you, you hire an engineer in front of like Welsh Comer, right? So often this gets talked about like, oh, they're just the consultant. What they should be saying is consulting engineers. Right? These are the experts that you bring on that you probably couldn't afford to have on staff at your county or city full time.
Yeah.
Right? You know, so they bring a lot of expertise there. You, you said something earlier about the, the applicant, the process of trying to find federal money for a southern truck route and made a comment about, eh, it's kind of funny that like Pullman wasn't there cheering for it. I, I see your point. What can you speak to about the relationship between county versus city? Because we are in a, a somewhat lopsided demographic here where a huge percentage of voters in Whitman County are located in one town.
Yeah.
But the county government and the city government don't always have the best relationship. They're not necessarily known for really tight collaboration. In fact, sometimes they're at odds.
Right.
You know, when we were, when we were looking at getting a huge amount of federal money to upgrade the airport, there was a, a moment in time there when the county kind of tried to derail that and say, hey, what if we shut down the Moscow Pullman Airport and build a new one out in the sticks? You know, like, we got stuff like that. So what, where are things at now and how do you hope to improve the relationship between town and country in the future?
Yeah, uh, I, I think all the electeds just need to remember who they're representing. And, and when you look at the county commissioners, a thing I often hear is, oh, there's Tom Handy, he's already from the city of Pullman, you know, the rest of the county, they don't want Pullman too heavy on the commissioner board. And then Pullman is kind of just like, well, we're the city of Pullman, so the counties, that's not our business. And, and both of those things are not true. But, you know, it, it, it shouldn't be the city of Pullman versus the county in, in the, you know, the county threw some economic development dollars to help finish up the, the downtown project.
Super helpful. You know, we were able to finish all that without anybody going into debt or raising taxes, and Whitman County was part of making that, that balance out.
Yeah, and so, you know, I think there needs to be a little more of this walking hand in hand where, you know, we're, we're fighting for the same people.
Yeah, so, so what would you do as a county commissioner to help kind of mend that fence and, and help our, our city government and our county government be on the same team?
Yeah, well, I, I hope, I hope I'm well on that path already. Talking to all the city council candidates. You know, I've, I've made some pretty good relationships with everyone else who's in this race. And uh, I would hope to see that some of those new faces in there, that that would continue. I know some other people already on the board and, and there's, there's good people in those places, and I think it's all just about relationships.
Yeah.
And uh, I think the, the, a county commissioner, I think what's really been lacking is that, you know, it's, it's not, they don't have any say over what the city of Pullman does. But they certainly can be in attendance and make a phone call and say, hey.
Yeah.
What if, what if we do this together? As opposed to, you're trying to do one thing, we're trying to do one thing.
Right.
You know.
Well, that spirit of collaboration, I think, is the, the key to a lot of issues that, that ail us. Like if we could just believe the best of each other, pick up the phone, have a conversation, or go downtown and enjoy a cup of coffee, a lot of this stuff can get worked out.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to happen at the, you know, behind closed doors. We can actually like, ha, be a community and build things together.
Yeah.
Um, another hot button issue that is affecting everybody right now is property taxes.
Yeah.
Holy cow, holy cow. I, I'm bracing myself. I haven't gotten my tax hike yet, but I know it's coming. Uh, what happened there and what went wrong?
Well, hope, hopefully you uh, hopefully you won't get a tax hike.
Okay.
More than the normal 1%, but.
Sure.
So what happened is for 20 years, we fell behind on market values. I think we fell as low as like 60, oh, 60, in the low 60s.
Cause property taxes set by the county auditor are based on assessed value, and so if you just don't assess it for a while.
Right.
The market goes up and your taxes stay the same.
Well, yeah, so the, the county will set its budget as to, we need this much money. And that budget can only increase, the levied tax amount can only increase by a max of 1% every year.
And, and to be clear, that's, that's the percentage that you draw the tax from. That's not a percentage of how much it went up the previous year, right?
It is, it is the total levied amount, um, can only go up by 1%.
So the amount collected or the percentage levy?
The amount collected.
Are you sure?
Yep, I, I verified that just recently, cause I was.
So how does that work in a, in an environment where like, you know, uh, Microsoft comes in and puts in a data center and all of a sudden you added 500 jobs.
It, it's on existing property. So any new construction is not part of that existing. So, so that'd be great if we got a Microsoft data center, right?
But you're saying that like year over year, regardless of external forces, it can't go up by more than 1%? I mean.
For, for that existing property pool.
That can't be right though, cause people's property can, goes up by more than 1% routinely. That happens in bad years.
But the, the levied amount, the total money amount, because so what, what I was, what I was doing my research on was that by falling so far behind in market values.
Yeah.
That, does the county get this big financial boon if they want it? Because we already have this levied, you know, whatever our levied percentage is.
Right.
Do we, do we get this big boon? Cause we raised our market value so much. But the 1% on existing property is owed in the total levied amount. So I think we were roughly seven, somewhere around 7 million.
Okay.
So, you know, that, that increase would be, it could go up $70,000 or.
Gosh, that, that's just not, I, I need to do more research. I didn't, that, that, that doesn't ring totally true.
So that's.
Per year? I mean.
I know.
Real estate goes up by a lot more than that.
Yeah, but.
If that were true, then there's no pot, like even if you assessed every year, you could never keep up with real estate values.
Right, but that, so that doesn't apply to, that doesn't, then that's, that's state law. And that doesn't apply to, you know, should you do a big remodel or?
Yeah.
You know, but if, if you want to keep living in your shack from the 1940s or, or whenever, it, it can only gain by, and it, it's not, it's not per house either.
No.
It's as a, as a collective.
Right.
They can't just jack up their budget in any given year. So, but what happened by falling behind for 20 years, our market values were way down. So we still increased our levy to function. But now that those have gone back up, the issue was that they thought that they could make it up over six years, which they're supposed to physically inspect a property every six years. And so they only did a sixth of the county at a time, hitting Pullman businesses specifically first. And so then you talk to business owners that say, right, property taxes doubled.
Yeah.
Now meanwhile, other parts of the county, their property taxes actually went down, cause those Pullman businesses were carrying a bigger, you know.
Oh, I see. So it's, it's countywide, it can only go up by that percentage.
Yep.
So it's what's your share of it?
Right.
So then, if this were to play out over that six years, are you saying that the people who had their taxes double, that it would actually go down in year two, three, four, and five?
So I'm saying, then this year, they're finally starting to do things right, apparently. What the county is saying is that they have reassessed the entire county's market values this year, which they were supposed to do every year. That's law, but they hadn't been doing. So they finally reassessed the entire county's market values.
Okay.
So those Pullman businesses should see their property taxes go back down once that tax is levied on January 1st, so.
Okay.
They'll come up with the levy rate on January 1st, and then I think we'll have, we'll have our tax statements mid-March.
So are, are we good? Crisis averted?
Don't know. Uh, January 1st, March 15th, something like that, we'll find out. So uh, if.
You got, you got me nervous now.
If everybody's taxes go up, I think the pitchforks are probably gonna come out, so.
And what role does, uh, as a county commissioner have in, in telling the auditor what, what to do in this situation?
Yeah, so you know, it, and it's the assessor for that one.
Oh, sure, thank you, uh, the assessor.
You know, they, they control their budget. And then the, I, I shouldn't say excuses, but I'm gonna say excuses. The excuses that I've heard over the years are, well, you know, we don't have enough people in the office. But I think over 20 years.
Yeah.
Over 20 years, you need to say, hey, you're falling behind on what you need to be doing.
Well, cause ultimately, you're not just collecting taxes for the county, you're, you're collecting it for Olympia.
Yeah.
Right?
And, and for the schools and, and everybody else.
I, I had read somewhere that Olympia said that Whitman County was dead last in terms of keeping up with assessed value. So we're, we're almost in detention right now.
Yeah, yeah. And, and then the sad thing is that maybe a previous assessor thought they were doing us some favors by keeping market values down. Cause it is scary, like, you think my house is doubled?
Yeah.
But had market values gone up and levied amounts would go down, like we would, what we would see if it was done in a perfect world is that every year your taxes would probably raise by 1%. And that 1% is optional. That's just because we want a bigger budget at the county. And I think we need to look at that and say, we want the bigger budget, but do we need the bigger budget? We need to have like some priorities.
Yeah.
And, you know, we don't need to just be raising money just to raise money, so.
So what's the appropriate action, action here for the community? Cause we've had people show up at city council meetings and argue about this, even though Pullman City Council has really no purview over this. Like what, what's the next, what's the path forward?
I think you need to open your tax bill. And I think if there's something, and read through it carefully, you know, the land value, the house value. And if, if there is some major discrepancy, that's where you need to go in front of the commissioners who sit on that, on that board to us of assessment, and they need, and then you need to raise your concerns there.
And you're, you're hoping to be on that board?
I'm hoping to be on that board. And, and I, I think it's.
Does that board have the, the, the power to lower people's property taxes?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Now, do they? I can't say that.
Yeah, well, let's talk about, let's talk about that. You say, uh, you mentioned that there's, it's a quasi judicial role, right? They're not just the three-way CEOs of the county, but they also can, can render judgment on things.
Right, so that's, that's, that's the example, that you get your property tax statement and it says that your house is worth a million dollars. And you're like, my, my house is not worth a million dollars. I didn't pay a million dollars for it. I haven't improved it. I have, you know, Zillow doesn't even think it's worth a million dollars. Then you can go in front of them and say, this is obviously wrong. Like, I don't even have paint on my house, so I need you to cut this down. And, and they can, they can decide that. They can, they can uh, overrule the assessor in that regard, so.
Yeah, and you think you would be a, a good moderate voice for the people?
Maybe a little common sense, hopefully. So, you know, we don't, we don't need to be, we're, we're in such an environment, we don't need to be ju, we need to be helping the people of the county. Now, that doesn't mean we're just blatantly lowering, you know, everybody pays anything.
You get a tax cut, you get a tax cut.
This isn't Oprah, this is, this is county government. But, you know, we need, we need to be able to at least hear those concerns of peoples.
Yeah, yeah. I, uh, there's plenty of things that people are concerned about, but when you're working with the county, some of the biggest ones tend to be, you know, the roads and land use. We talked about the big issues, wind farms and all that, but you know, for, for most people, it's really coming down to putting up a building or, you know, either putting land into production, pulling it out, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
What are some of the ways that the county can improve the relationship with the rural parts of our county?
I mean.
You can speak from personal experience.
Okay, well, I, I think, I think the biggest reminder of the county is, is you're going down any of our gravel roads on a washboard and, you know, your vehicle is shaking apart. So. So, and, and that, that's, that is a hot topic because the voters approved to increase the road levy tax. Now, this is, this wouldn't apply to city of Pullman. This would be only county residents. But they voted to self-impose more road tax so they could have better roads.
Okay.
The roads have not improved at all since.
So what happened to that money?
That's a great question. And then you look at an event like this spring, where we had all these, we call them goalie wa- or I call them goalie washers. You know, where the.
Big storm that comes out and.
Yeah.
Roads, roads away, a road bed.
Yeah, it hits us at the wrong time of year where the crops are not really holding, retaining moisture or where.
Yeah, we lost a chunk of Sunshine Road for a couple of days.
Yep, and there were roads around the county, and that is a huge, that hurts the county road budget big time. And I think when you look at, well, could this be prevented? We can't change the weather.
Yeah.
But we can make sure that the culverts were clear and the ditches were clean and that the water was falling like it should, and that would've, you know, probably saved Sunshine Road. That would've saved, I don't know if you could say Flat Road.
I'm thinking of the roads out, you know, my way, but.
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to pick on Sunshine Road. That's a very unfortunate geometry there with the drainage and all that. But do you feel like there's, do you feel like the county's been lax when it comes to those infrastructure projects, or is it just bad luck?
I, I think what I've noticed is a lack of that, um, preventative maintenance. You know, the ditches used to be cleared a little more often.
Yeah.
Culverts would be maintained. I think we could do a much better job at that. That, uh, I think I heard, uh, one of the commissioners, um, say that, well, they're sending our operators of the road graders to Greater School. And, you know, maybe, but maybe more time in the seat and a lot of, a lot of time for those, you know, cuz I, I've done, uh, a lot of, uh, labor jobs over the year. Some of, most of it's just keeping your butt in the seat, you know, and like, let's just put our head down and get the work done, so. And, and if we need more gravel on the road, let's put more gravel on the road.
Totally. I, I don't have any insight to this. I can just, I know that road maintenance, uh, is always more expensive than people think.
Yeah.
And it sounds like to do the jobs we want done, the county's gonna need more money, which probably means letting property taxes go up a little bit. Or be okay with not having some of these things and be okay with driving on.
See, I think, I think sometimes we think about this in like, oh, it, it's only takes more money. What if we, I threw this idea out, what if we just had a way that you could contact your local road department? And say, hey, there's a problem out here. You know, we gotta, we gotta plug culvert. Like, you should come out and fix it. Cuz I know, until I, uh, snuck the cell phone number from my local road shop, like, it was pretty hard to get in touch with them to tell them about a problem out our way. So, you know, maybe just an email that's overseen, but I'd be happy to look over that as a county commissioner to say.
Yeah.
People keep complaining about Clear Creek Road or whatever.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna take a drive out there and take a look. So maybe, maybe I can just ask someone to do it and something gets done.
My experience interfacing with the county has been overwhelmingly positive. You know, I, I live near the Chipman Trail and, um, I, I got a chance to meet the, the Parks guys and I've kind of been out here a couple of times. They've always been fantastic. When I talked about a project I wanted to do or something that I needed, they've been super accommodating and very neighborly. I will say, finding that contact information.
Yeah.
Was a chore. Like, there, I, the website I couldn't get to, I actually drove out to, uh, Colfax and ended up just looking at the directory on the wall and trying to figure out who I'm supposed to talk to, and then of course, none of them are in the office, they're all out in the field. Like, it was, it was a chore. Once I made that contact, the county crews have been great.
Yeah.
And so if we could find a way to make the county government and the county officials more accessible, I think that would go a long ways.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of our problems are really, and we've talked about this, GIS, not hitting record on the Zoom. Let's just, let's bring the county into the twenty-first century.
There we go.
So.
There we go. Love it. Um, what's your favorite, uh, favorite spot in Whitman County or Pullman to hang out? Coffee shop, restaurant, what's, what's your favorite place to hang out?
Well, my favorite spot, especially, uh, now that we're out politicking and, and I, I really, I love talking to people. But if I can just be out on our ranch, just looking at the Snake River.
Nice.
And hanging out with cows and nobody's hassling me, that's, that's probably my favorite spot, but.
Almost heaven.
Yeah, um, no, I, there's, there's so many places and, uh, there's, yeah, there's so many places in Pullman in the county that, yeah, they, they just mean a lot to me. We've been here a long time.
Yeah.
And, uh.
And any favorite parks?
Oh, well, the, what, for what, you know, like, we, we have great parks, like, uh.
Whitman County has amazing parks.
Yeah, like Clem Guard Park, like, that's a great quiet park and a good little hike up there. There used to be a pond back there.
Oh, yeah.
That, uh, I'd fish at, and now you gotta go down the road a little further. When I, this was when I was a little kid. Used to catch crawdads in that creek and stuff, so. I love those. Um, Sunnyside Park would have to be my favorite park in Pullman, so just lots of space. Love that, some water.
Yeah, what do you like to do for fun? What, what are some of your hobbies?
Uh, chasing a two-year-old right now is.
Oh, that's a funny, that's a funny. Everyone says terrible twos, and I actually love toddlers.
Yeah, we, we. We definitely have, uh, you know, we have some of that, some tantrums and stuff, but it, it is fun. There's so much personality coming out through those tiers and they just, they just wanna experience the world and do it their way.
I wanna be a two-year-old again.
Yeah. No, it's fun. So, so that's kinda cut into my, uh, my free time and my hobbies and, and, uh, politicking takes up a lot of time. Cows always like to get out whenever you have something going on.
Yeah.
Um, the great part about this is just getting connected with different community organizations. I think out of this, I'll probably be a Rotary and Alliance Club member.
Nice.
And helping Bobby down at, uh, Downtown Pullman Association. She asked me to sit on a board, so.
Awesome.
Um, you know, I'm only looking at less and less time, but, uh, in general, if I have any extra time, I am outdoors. I like skiing and, and fishing and hunting and anything to get me outside, so. Love that. You won't find me doing too much lounging unless it's, you know, Cougar Football Saturday or something.
There we go, there we go. One last question before we wrap up. Uh, where do you see Pullman and, uh, and Greater Whitman County in ten years? If we pull together and do everything right, what does this region look like a decade from now?
Yeah, we, I mean, we, we should be in a new boom era at some point. Cuz we are, I think there's a lot of pent-up energy and everybody is just wanting to see everything make a one-eighty and go the other direction, you know? And I think you can tell by the people, especially in the, the turnout for the Pullman city council elections, you know, there's some frustrations. Um, I'm running cuz there's some frustration at the county level. And if we start making some of these changes, we don't need to, you know, we don't need to, uh, necessarily dictate that, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna put this there and this there, but we just need to become the most friendly environment we can for businesses. Uh, do everything we can help our residents. We need to push back a little bit on the state, on some of these things that are being imposed. As county commissioner, that should be the, that should be the loudest voice in the room. We need to kinda just start setting our own path and, and really figuring out what we want as our priorities, so. I want, I want to, uh, I think, I think something like creating maybe a little bit of like a border alliance with the Clarkstons and the Liberty Lakes and the Newports of Washington and saying, hey, we, we have some real issues. Um, being on a border to wherever, you know, you can't, everyone goes to Moscow to fill up on gas and, and get their groceries and stuff, but, um, you know, we need to, we need to start making our, uh, making our priorities known to the rest of the world. And then, and just help out and listen to all the constituents, help them out, so.
Awesome. Well, Cody, thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.